Looking fine today.
This was grade school and you'd be the seven-year-old with your curly hair that just kinda pushes it all the time. I was that kid, too.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City of Kenora Committee of the Whole meeting. Public information notices as required under Notice by Law 144-2007. The public has advised the council's intention to adopt the following at its December 21st, 2021 meeting. Adopt its 2022 municipal capital and unusual spending budget. Adopt a new general tariff of fees and charges by law. Adopt a new Planning Act applications tariff of fees and charges by law. At this time, I'd ask all rise and councillor Gosse to give us a blessing.
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous peoples. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the City of Kenora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Kenora. Let these principles guide us in our decision-making.
Thank you, councillor. At this time, I'd ask members of council if anyone wishes to declare pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof, either on today's agenda or from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance. Councillor Smith?
Yes, Your Worship. I'd like to declare a pecuniary interest on agenda item 3.2, the engineering infrastructure report regarding NADAM. That part of the report, it's a direct pecuniary interest. My spouse is a consultant that worked with NADAM and he was involved in the city audit. And I'll leave the room when the director speaks to that part of the report.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councillor Smith, the clerk has advised me that you just need to step back. You don't need to leave the room and you won't be allowed to participate, but...
Oh, I'm closed. You have to leave. Okay.
Okay. At this time, I'd ask for confirmation of previous council minutes or committee minutes.
Your Worship, moved by myself, second by councillor Chase, that the minutes from the last regular Committee of the Whole meeting held November 9th, 2021, and the special Committee of the Whole meeting held November 23rd and December 3rd, 2021, be confirmed as written and filed.
All in favor? Carried? At this time, I'd like to welcome RC Strategies. They'll be joining us today to talk about our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we welcome Michael, Michael and Tom. And the floor is yours, gentlemen. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning. It's our pleasure to speak with the Committee of the Whole today. So, good morning. And I'm going to provide a short presentation, really that offers an update to the master plan and some work that's been undertaken by the team and by staff within, but obviously from many parts of the community over the last several months. Probably take about 15 to 20 minutes covering these four topics. And just very quickly getting into topic number one, I just wanted to provide everybody a bit of an overview of the project again. I know we've spoken with all of you, members of council. So, this is probably a bit of old information, but for members of the public that might be listening, it's helpful context. So, we have largely completed Phase 1 and almost fully completed Phase 2. Phase 1 is about analysis and research that we've undertaken relating to the state of recreation and parks in Kenora. And Phase 2 is really around engaging with the public, stakeholders, with youth. And we've done that in a variety of ways and we're going to provide an early glimpse of some of the findings that we've had a chance to analyze so far. The surveys just really completed at the beginning of the month. So, we're in the process of building reports for both Phase 1 and Phase 2. And those will come back to you formally later in the new year. Phase 3, which is not really yet started, is the process of developing the master plan for Parks and Recreation. So, we are very much providing this presentation as an overview, as an update. It is very early, still in the process of building the master plan. But the steps involved in Phase 3 will see draft plan come back to you for your consideration and ultimately for public review after that and then back to you for final approval. That's the process that we have set for following. So, the purpose of the master plan, really overview here is to really provide a blueprint for decision-making, both at a staff level as well as at a council level, related to Parks and Recreation investments over the next 10 years up to 2031. And we like to think that the plan will be used to inform annual priorities in your business plan and in your budgeting process that you undertake annually or maybe over longer periods of time. But the idea is that the master plan provides everybody with the context for priorities that should be in those annual budgets and business plans so that there are no surprises necessarily. So, that's the general goal of all master plans. And in this case, we are looking to engage the insights from many national and provincial priority-setting documents as well. So, beyond just the City of Kenora, the documents listed below. Pathways to Recreation of Albain, which is a national framework for recreation and Parks. Parks for All is a national framework for parks' priority setting across the country. Let's Get Moving is an active living strategy for communities across Canada. And the Sport for Life program, which you may be familiar with, is all about how to engage more children, more people in sport throughout their lives at different levels and at different times, time periods in their life. All of these national documents and others that we haven't mentioned here provide a lot of influencing ingredients for a master plan of this nature. And that's the stage wrap in terms of considering a lot of those inputs. In terms of what the master plan will address, really offering a case for justifying a sustained investment in Parks and Recreation in Kenora. Sometimes that's maybe questioned or there's a desire for clarity around why a community would want to or need to or appreciate the benefits of Parks and Recreation. The master plan provides that clarity. It'll outline strategies for optimizing the use of existing infrastructure and land, always over a priority over reinvesting or building new. So, we very much are focusing on ways to optimize the use of your existing arena, your existing fields and other community assets that are obviously in this day and age quite costly to replace or develop new. We'll identify gaps in service delivery and provision, something to consider or things to consider in terms of filling over time, and ultimately seeking to prioritize recommendations for future investment in infrastructure. In many instances, we'll be outlining or establishing service levels and offering development guidance for different types of indoor and outdoor facilities. And I might add also parkland to that. And we'll be identifying ways in which the entire Parks and Recreation delivery system, all of the policies and practices and procedures that are in place, that staff use mainly to work with the public and provide customer service can be strengthened. And by strengthening those system ingredients, you achieve optimization. A couple of areas of focus here, just in terms of data that we will, we have pulled and we have been analyzing, that will inform the master plan. So, on the left, you see the nature of the Community and Stakeholder Engagement Program that has recently been completed and will provide an overview of that. My colleague will provide an overview of that shortly. So, we did a resident survey, both committed and opened, and then a youth survey where we heard from students, elementary and secondary students across the community. We had numerous discussions with stakeholders and there was also a questionnaire to specific stakeholders as well to help us really understand their needs, their interests, their priorities and their requirements for support. You might have seen sounding boards. These were posters that were left in community centers, community buildings, as well as parks back in October, November. And there was a digital crowdsourcing platform where residents could leave marks on a digital map and make comments about the value or the importance of those places to them. And the public could respond to other members of the community about those posts. So, we'll provide a glimpse of what that looked like as well in this presentation. Complemented by a lot of research and analysis that we've done in our offices and in your community around the system as a whole, your facilities, your parks. We visited them all, we've categorized them, analyzed them, understand them, which is an important perspective for us to have. But also looked at a lot of spatial data, demographic data, utilization data of your facilities and analyzed all of your existing policies and practices so that we have a solid baseline of understanding of how the system works and its current condition in order to begin the process of putting the master plan together. So, I'll pass the presentation over to my colleague, Mike Romer, who will take you through a snapshot of the key findings from the Community and Stakeholder Reentry Program.
Thanks, Michael. Your Worship, members of council, good to be here with you this morning from the middle of Windsor and Alberta, where I'm calling from. So, I just wanted to give you an overview of a few of the highlights from the engagement, but I just, I'm going to caveat that with, as soon as we present initial results to a community, to decision-makers, it's easy to get fixated on some of the findings that I'll share with you today. Definitely, we want you to be excited about it. But just remember that there's a whole bunch of other elements to define a need and defining strategic direction when we come forward with a draft plan later. So, this first slide here just shows some of the, I guess, tools. Gives you examples, images of some of the tools that were used. Hopefully, as members of the community, obviously you had a chance to participate in some or a few of these different engagement tactics. The next slide outlines how many responses we actually got and what informs our work moving forward. So, probably one of the most important, if not the most important components to the engagement was a household survey that was controlled. So, you needed to have a code from a postcard that you got in the mail to get into it. And because it was controlled, we can do calculations on it and say it was statistically reliable. So, for the statisticians in the audience, it's reliable plus or minus 7% 19 times out of 20, which is pretty good for a survey like this. And that's those 319 responses representing about 650 residents. And as you go down the list here, you can see the different tactics that we used, the responses that we were able to gather, which we got over 1,200 impressions from the community, but those 1,200 impressions represent almost 11,000 people. There'd be some overlap there, but for instance, with the group survey, we had 20 groups respond. But you can see there's a big number of participants or residents that those groups represent. So, the first couple of slides here have some graphs and they're from the household-coded surveys. Again, this is statistically reliable, plus or minus 7%, 19 times out of 20. So, there's some value questions here that we ask in all of these planning exercises. And then we get into more detail about specific priorities and so on. But you can see this one just says, you know, people participate in these kind of activities for physical and mental health, to enjoy nature and for a whole bunch of different reasons. And that's why we invest in the municipality. Go ahead to the next slide there. I'm going to read through these pretty quick. Like I said, 20 minutes, maybe two of 10, so we're going to have to go pretty quick to get through it all. But the next one here talks about importance of recreation parks on different aspects of communities. So, first off, the community, 70% suggested that it's very important to their own active and healthy living, obviously. But the next point down there, 82% suggested that it's very important that having these kind of services are valuable to the appeal and attractiveness of the city for attracting residents. So, that's a key thing to remember about recreation and parks is there are benefits to the user, to the participant, to our household if we participate in activities. But there's lots of other benefits that are true to the community that a colleague of ours likes to say you can't escape. So, even if you sit on your couch, you're still benefiting from Parks and Recreation in your community. Go to the next slide there, Michael. This one outlines just different, I guess, most popular activities that people participate in or that households participate in. Important to note here, if you look at the indoor and the outdoor activities, you'll see that the most important or the most participated in activities are the ones that aren't necessarily organized. Some of them are, but most of them aren't organized. They're spontaneous. They're activities that appeal to the broader municipality and broader resident base and not just maybe a certain age demographic or skill. That being said, they're all important. All of these activities are important and they all add to that value in your community. Go to the next slide, please. We did ask about opinions on facilities. First off, indoor facilities that maybe should be enhanced or developed. So, these charts are a little bit busy. I'm not going to try to explain them, maybe be able to look at them after our presentation here and they'll form part of our recommendations ultimately. But we did, you know, get into the, I guess, detail, the nitty-gritty of having people, having residents comment on specifically what kind of amenities they want to see investment in, or maybe that they don't want to see investment in. Key to this chart and the next few slides is that there isn't unanimity among the community. Parks and Recreation is a diverse offering and when it comes to different bias, passions, amenities, it's not easy decision-making for us as consultants to bring, and to bring draft plans back to you and for you selected officials to agree to them and then to ultimately make those decisions. Go to the next slide, Michael. So, this is the same, even busier, chart, but this is for outdoor facilities. If you go to the next slide. We actually asked maybe a little bit higher-level questions about the current state or satisfaction with these kinds of services in the community. So, the one on the left's pretty interesting. We asked if people, residents, thought that there was sufficient parks and green spaces within a reasonable walk from their home. And as you can see, well, half said they didn't think that's the case. And our GIS analysis can prove that, right or wrong, and will, but it's a perception thing for sure. Even if you do have accessible spaces that are within that 10-minute walk, almost half of your residents don't think that they're accessible. So, that's an important consideration. And then the one on the right talks about funding and actually I think the next slide does, too, but what you should do to fund Parks and Recreation, which I was looking for. And this one's interesting because 52% suggested that you should increase funding, which is good. I mean, as Recreation and Parks legislators, we like to hear that. But on the next slide, I think it's the next slide. Oh, sorry, it's a, it's a, go one more, Michael. Let's jog one more. There was, we asked about support for tax increases. There was some propensity to pay more, but remember, we didn't have a carrot to say for this much more taxes, you could get this kind of amenity. But only 27% said that they weren't willing to pay any more taxes. So, again, that's a good thing. As it relates to user fees, almost two-thirds suggested that you should maintain the current level of user fees. So, these aren't meant to like drive your decision-making, but they're meant to give you a guidepost as to what the general view is out there. If you go, yeah, perfect. Again, we, at the end of the day, have to come up with strategic directions related to infrastructure and other things. But we really wanted to ask the public for their opinion on what kinds of actions the city could take moving forward. Again, this is just the public survey, even though it's important. Lots of other considerations coming into play here. But if you look at the light, the two shades of light through there from the left to the right, those are the amenities or the potential areas of investment that the community supports the most, that your general resident base, your household, supports the most. Again, you'll see lots of kind of spontaneous or drop-in activities, lots of outdoor activities. But for sure, either improving existing or developing new trails is by far the highest priority, as well as parks, infrastructure, picnic shelters, pavilions. And there are some suggestions here for indoor facilities and for other aspects in Parks and Rec. Definitely slanted more towards outdoor and kind of spontaneous or drop-in use. The next two slides here, I believe, are about youth. And this was gathered through our youth survey. And it's always good to understand what the priorities of youth are in terms of, first off, the activities they participated in. So, you can see fairly intuitive here, gymnastics sports and swimming are top indoor, skiing and walking, downhill skiing, walking are the top, the top outdoor ones. As you can see, though, the percentages are fairly low here and spread out. So, again, diverse interests of the entire community as it relates to Parks and Rec and diverse interests of youth. Go to the next slide, Michael. Always like this one, what kind of barriers youth are facing in terms of participating more in Parks and Rec activities. The first barrier is lack of interest. So, we can try to convince them. I've got a couple youths in my house and I'm not sure I can overcome lack of interest. But things like cost, things like transportation or things that we might be able to address as a municipality to get more youth engaged. The next two here are from our crowdsourcing methodology. So, that was one of those images I showed you. And I hope you had a chance, some of you at least had a chance to participate in this. Again, you'll see some common themes here. Outdoor recreation, winter activities are kind of most prevalent when we look through the results of that crowdsourcing. There was, and remember, those that participated in this were probably more likely to be either interested or participating in Parks and Rec. But there was almost 70% of respondents suggesting that we should improve and enhance our investment in Parks and Recreation. Go to the next one, Michael. And you'll see again, outdoor recreation, trails, water access. Those things were most kind of important, were deserving of most future focus in terms of people that participated in the crowdsourcing. Which is kind of nice because those things tend to cost a little less than indoor facilities. But spoiler alert, we're going to give you decisions to make and potential investments on both the indoor and the outdoor side. So, thanks for hearing me out. I'm going to pass it over to Tom to give you a bit more information.
Just got to step in here and, Tom, are you, yeah, you ready?
You go, you first and I'll do it.
Yeah, okay. So, a few research insights overall. Again, you know, taking and drawing trends from those national documents that I indicated, those national policy trend-setting documents that I shared at the beginning of the presentation. Very clearly, this master plan and many of your master plans are probably going to be, you know, responding to the challenges of supporting community recover from the pandemic and whatever that happens to be. Your community and many others, the community's sport organizations, are looking for certain kinds of support and assistance to continue doing what they did before COVID-19, which was to provide sport and recreation programs to the public. In many cases, they do that on a for-profit basis. And those programs are really important to see continue in all communities. And so, how are our communities doing that? What practices are they putting in place with systems and supports that they are offering? We know that the equity, diversity and inclusion interests and agenda are really important to community and to Kenora. And so, you should expect to see the changes and trends that are impacting public Parks and Recreation reflected in this master plan. We know that the climate change agenda is significant, particularly and obviously from an outdoor recreation point of view, but also from a mitigation and adaptation point of view in terms of how community thinks about its natural and green infrastructure and how it designs and develops and maintains it so that it has adaptive resiliency built into it and protects the community in the future. Your community has had some significant reinvestment in older infrastructure, but there are elements of your infrastructure that are aging, that are maybe coming to the end of life cycle and where decisions may need to be made about those types of infrastructure. So, we will provide guidance, you know, based on trends that we experienced elsewhere on all of these topics. A few, there we go, a few insights that we've really picked up already. And you do have an age-friendly strategy. So, you're well aware of the implications of population aging in Kenora. These trends have a significant implication on service delivery as you think about the future, where a considerably larger portion of the town, the city's population will be older. It will be looking for different, placing different demands on the recreation center, for example, on programming. And the community organizations that support older people in the community will, should also expect to see a significant increase in demand and a difference in preferences for activities as well. So, the plan will provide some guidance in that respect. The, I already mentioned this at the beginning of the presentation, really, but we see an opportunity to first and foremost, always optimize the infrastructure, the well-maintained infrastructure that Kenora has. And this can be done through enhancements of a sort of higher nature, but also by looking at things such as user fees and allocation adjustments. So, who is entitled to primetime ice and for what reason under a policy that council approves? Adjustments to these kinds of policies can have a significant impact on the overall utilization and therefore the overall future demand for and need for infrastructure to satisfy those demands. We know that community sport organizations or recreation-based organizations are, you know, uncertain about the future because of COVID. But we also have analyzed the way in which different community sport and recreation organizations in Kenora are supported by the city. And we see a range of supports for different reasons, probably over different periods of time. And know that there's possibilities for a more consistent approach to supporting community organizations that other municipalities have employed for the same reason. They just want to try and be more equitable in the allocation of scarce resources and to create a transparent process for councils to make those decisions as regularly as it wants to. So, things like a community grant program that all organizations would have to apply to are examples of those kinds of practices that we see. are examples of those kinds of practices that we see much more commonly in communities across the country. And that may address some of the inconsistencies that we noticed with the way support is provided in Kenora currently. And we also have noticed in the maps, you know, on the bottom right of the slide, indicate a level of vulnerability in the areas that are showing up as orange and yellow. These are areas that are identified as, by my stats, get is this higher prevalence of low-income populations, low-income households. This is based on the 2016 census, as we all know, that's a little dated now and very soon to be updated. But it does point us in the direction of understanding the level of provision of services in areas that might most benefit from parks and recreation. And most organizations that work with vulnerable populations will use this type of analysis to focus their investments. And what we're suggesting here is really a community strategy that targets investments, as you're probably already doing, in areas where the need is likely greatest and the benefit is most likely the most inclusive. Tom, over here.
Sure. So one of the objectives of the master plan process is also to inform the city's, you know, strategy and policy framework around parks and trails. So we spent quite a bit of time doing an inventory of park supply and an analysis of the level of service. And you can see the map there on the top right and the table below. Part of the final master plan would be the development of a classification system for parks that'll, I think, be embedded into the overall policy framework. I think what we're finding in our analysis, and I think this is corroborated in the community response, is that Kenora has actually really, you know, an excellent inventory and supply of parks, but it's the type of parks that there's maybe some imbalance in terms of community scale or citywide serving parks, especially on the wide front. Kenora's got some just excellent park assets. I think where we're seeing some deficiency, and this is noted also by community members in terms of walkability, it's the neighborhood scale park where you can see, you know, the provision of neighborhood scale parks as walkable parks that serve immediate neighborhood. There is some deficiency there. We also know there's challenges associated with, you know, the acquisition of that sort of park plan, given the topography and development patterns. But it's something I think we're going to focus on in our recommendations. Improve trail connectivity, again, the community has noted this. You've got some great loop trail systems, but really, and the parks and the school division's doing some great work on developing additional loop trails. But that citywide interconnectivity between the trail systems is something that we see great opportunity. The previous teach's Parks and Trail Master Plan promoted that direction. Obviously, the community is interested in that sort of direction as well. And then, I think the last piece that we're finding in our initial research really relates to parks' operation and management. One aspect of that is the need for a broader urban forestry strategy. You know, there's lots of trees in Kenora, and it's a critical part of the character of Kenora and Memorial Region. But it's also a major management burden, if you will, and a huge potential investment. But it's important that you have a strategy to manage that tree inventory that's so critical for the park and all these spaces. So that's just a really quick overview of some of the theory of Parks and Trail working and definitely youth employment.
Thanks, Tom. So just wrapping this up, this is a preview, as we've all said, about some of our research findings and consultation findings. We have to provide reports and do those reports with staff on all of those activities and then begin the process of building the master plan in the new year. And in both instances, we'll provide further updates to council as directed by staff or requested by council. But our plan is to bring a draft plan to council in early 2022 for your consideration and review, ample time for doing so. And then with your support, have community engage in the final review of that document and then bring it back to council for your final consideration. So that's the next series of steps. Some work to do over the holidays for sure on our part. And then early in the new year with staff, which it's been a wonderful working relationship with everybody so far. We're on schedule and looking forward to successfully bringing this project to completion early in 2022. So thank you, everybody, for their time and happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Counselor, are there any quick questions here before your comments? Counselor Correa.
Thanks, Your Worship. So I'm just looking on one of the screens where it has the level of support for potential auctions, the household one. And just for clarification, I just wanted to know, it says improve existing athletic fields. Would that include ball diamonds, I'm assuming?
Sorry, I just, I have the presentation on my screen, so I can't, I can't shift to have a look at it myself. But yes, it would include athletic fields, including ball fields. We are aware that the city itself doesn't own or operate, you know, athletic fields, traditionally, you know, rectangular soccer fields. Those are privately owned and operated. But yes, I think that responds to both of those types of fields from outdoors, mainly spring/summertime use perspective.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Van Welling out.
Thank you. You mentioned about the user fees and the finances and the funding and investments. But is there something with a cost recovery at all? Is there going to be a recommendation like 60% with ice rinks or 70% with ball fields? Are you going to come up with a recommendation?
Well, from, through you, committee chair, the basis for you, maybe in a range, and also some guidance for you in terms of, most importantly, seeking to optimize your use of your existing assets as well as you can before there's any contemplation of additional facility provision. And we see that opportunity for your arena ice as well as your ball fields. There's opportunities to optimize, and those opportunities would include considering adjustments to your fees and charges that have an implication on demand and utilization. But as does allocation. There's practices that we've noticed in your existing allocation policy that affect the utilization of both of those types of assets. And we want you to have some consideration of alternatives that might be appropriate. Ultimately, that's at your discretion. But if you consider them appropriate, we would consider that they would have an implication on the optimal use of those facilities. They would likely cause some degree of increased optimization or better utilization and higher cost recovery.
And Mr. Chair, I might just add to that. So it is nice and clean to be able to identify, say, a cost recovery target, like 60% or 70%. And you might hear some of your colleagues or other communities using those numbers. We don't tend to try to focus on those unless a community or a client group really wants to, just because the numbers, what goes into that 70% can vary dramatically between communities. And like Michael said, it's more about maybe getting a good idea of where we're at right now and then thinking about ways to do better as a community. Not necessarily as we compare to our peers with different percentages and stuff, but more how can we just be more efficient at what we're delivering right now. And I just want to go back to the previous question quickly, too. If you look at Slide 15, it does specifically talk about ball diamonds and about enhancements or developing of new and so on. So that one is, does break down ball diamonds more specifically, might give you the information you're looking for. But I would also stress that this is just one element of our research and one influence that helps us get to a conclusion or a recommendation. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much for your presentation this morning. And we definitely are looking forward to the final report. There's a lot of, just what you presented today, there's a lot of great information. So thank you, and till we meet again, have a great and safe holiday season.
Thanks very much.
All right, we'll move on to the finance portion of the meeting. And Charlotte has provided reports on the October financial statements.
Thanks, Mayor. So the October financial statements are trending in the same way as the previous months. I mean, we have our loss in revenue in specific departments, and we still have that. Although now that we're opening up, we are seeing that coming back, but certainly won't be up to budget this year. So what I wanted to say about the October statements is that any deficits in these departments as compared to budget will be covered by the COVID funding. So as you recall, we had appropriated excess COVID funding from 2020 into contingency reserves. So we will be pulling that out. In addition, we did get some COVID funding in 2021. So once we have a better feel for the year, I will be giving an estimate to council on what we will be using in that COVID funding to cover the shortfalls. Don't forget, we also have cost savings in these departments as well. So it'll be on an entire department basis.
Counsel?
The good news is the bag tag sales and the landfill tipping fees are still out there. So we're building those reserves.
The, because you just interjected, I've lost my question.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
The COVID funding from the province. Do you anticipate there'll be monies available to carry forward into 2022? Because we're going to face some, we're not going to recover to where we were prior with arena usage for the rest of the season.
It's so hard to predict. However, sort of when I'm thinking about it, I think there will be. I also know that MMLOH is monitoring the situation and hopefully will be providing more funding for that reason. I mean, we're not out of this yet.
All right, thank you. Q3 investments, please.
Okay, so the change here, and you'll notice that the $11,749,000 in debt that we had with the, in the Prosperity Trust Fund is now with Prudential Investor. So you can see that the investments, the book value is now $34,514,000. At the end of June, it was $22,609,000. That reflects the transfer of that $11 million. So the market value at the end of September is $35,663,740. The year-to-date actual return on these investments to September 30th is 4.1%. The return since inception, which is June 2020, is 7.6%. Not bad. So the second part of the Prosperity Trust Fund is a portfolio of $4.9 million. These were put into trust just to sort of move investments gradually over. As these investments mature, they will be moving into the Prudential Investor, into the One Fund regime as well. The third portfolio within the Prosperity Trust Fund is still with our Manu Life Asset Management and RBC Dexia. So this is the benchmark. Had we left all the investments with RBC Dexia, this is the return we would have made on that, well, $22 million from before. But this is the benchmark. The year-to-date return is negative 0.28%. The rate of return since inception is 2.63%. So this is sort of what you want to compare to because this is what we would have made had we stayed. And then the next paragraph just says, we've moved that $11 million over. So it's now where it belongs. Okay, we also have investments that are not in the Prosperity Trust Fund, and this is just our general fund investments. Market value at the end of September is $20,299,563. We hold it in a couple of different portfolios. The year-to-date return for the contingency outcome portfolio is 7.9%. Since inception is 12.6%. And for the three-to-five-year outcome portfolio, the year-to-date is 1.2%. Since inception is 3.9%.
All right, thank you, Charlotte. I got 1.3.
Okay, receivable write-offs at this time of year. We bring to council our proposed receivable write-offs. For this year, the total amount is $2,913.56. These are the receivables that were considered to be uncollectible back in 2019. So you do it 22 years after they are deemed to be uncollectible. You won't see any water, wastewater receivables on this list because we transfer those to property taxes when collection efforts are not successful. Even though we are writing these receivables off, staff still works on collecting them where possible. And sometimes people will want to use our services again, and before they can, we'll collect some of these. So it does happen. And you have a schedule at the back just to show you where these receivables are from. We have sundry receivables, some parking, cemetery, and transfer station.
Thank you, Charlotte. 1.4, capital budget.
Okay, you will, I'm sure, recall our meeting where we discussed the capital budget. So this report is requesting the approval of the 2022 municipal capital budget only for the year 2022, including the unusual spending. Some changes that we made to the budget that was presented to you are listed in the report. You will recall that we had a railway street phase two for 2022. We had funded the part that isn't financed by ISIP by debt. And in between, when we were putting the budget together and when we discussed it, there was the announcement of the new NORDS funding. So we're proposing that we use the NORDS funding, $493,961, for phase two in 2022. I know that you are...
I'll wait till here.
Okay, so I can, okay. We also had a plotter breakdown just before the budget was discussed with you, and we moved a 2023 project to 2022 for a plotter for $20,000. And we also changed the McLeod Park Huskies Landing project. We now have NOHFC funding. We will take advantage of that funding, increase the project to $941,280. Also use the allocation for the bridge artwork of $50,000 for the project and not use the red funding. and not use the RED funding for that project, because NOHFC is just so much more. So we'll take advantage of that. In the unusual spend side, council requested that we double the CIP funding from one hundred to two hundred thousand. The additional one hundred is coming from contingency reserve. And also the shipment lottery development is truly not an unusual spend. We're moving that on to the capital budget side, but nothing changes with the project. We're just moving it to capital. The net tax levy allocation for 2022 was reduced by three hundred and eighteen thousand from 2021, and I'm proposing that we appropriate it to a capital reserve to be used in subsequent years, so that we don't lose our placeholding for capital spending.
Questions, counsel? All right, Charlotte, if we could go back to the railway street and the NORDS funding. We're showing it at four hundred and ninety-four thousand, but we only get three hundred and twenty-two thousand. So could you explain the math, please?
Yeah, that's correct. So technically, we're getting three hundred and twenty-two thousand in some odd dollars for each year over five years. We, it comes out to about one point six million. Technically, we could spend all of that money in 2022 and then just collect our three hundred and twenty-two thousand every year. So even though we are only receiving three hundred and twenty-two thousand in 2022, we're bankrolling, we're going to be paying for the rest, we'll collect the next phase of that investment in 2023. So we do get one point six. We have to wait for five years, but we can spend it any way we want within those five years.
Thank you, Charlotte. Any questions? All right. The next one is one point five vacancy rebate program.
Okay, so we do have a vacancy rebate program where on commercial and industrial properties, we allow a discount of thirty and thirty-five percent respectively on vacant units for those property classes. What we're proposing to do is phase out that discount over the next two years. So people will be applying for the vacancy rebate for 2021. The deadline is the end of February 2022. We're proposing that we only allow fifty percent of the rebate that we've been allowing so far, and that for 2023, we phase it out to zero. There are numerous reasons why we're proposing this, and just so you know, majority of municipalities have either phased it out or have reduced the discount. What it does is it sort of gives an incentive for property owners to do nothing with their property and let it sit there, because they're getting a third of their taxes reduced. So it's also an administrative burden for staff. We go in and inspect the properties, but we can't for sure prove that the property was vacant throughout the year unless we visited it monthly. So it is administratively cumbersome. And often, I think that impact, when they do evaluate the property, they take into account that it is vacant, and so their assessment may be reduced. And so they're getting a double, a double hit when they also get the vacancy rebate. So we're proposing to phase it out over two years. In the report, you do have a schedule of the municipal portion of the rebate, because obviously there is an education portion. But as you can see, it's greatly decreased over the last few years. So we're just, I mean, every little bit helps.
Questions? Counselor McMillan?
Charlotte, just to comment, I'm not exactly sure how to ask this question, so maybe you can help me clarify it. But the vacancy rebate program is not a brand-new item?
Oh, gosh, no.
No, it's been something that's been, staff have been bringing to council over the years to look at phasing it out or whatever. So it's not, it's not something brand-new this year?
No.
And it's not unfamiliar to property owners?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We, good point, we did bring this to council before. We, it was a two-part report, and we asked to eliminate the vacant and excess land discount, which we phased out. But the vacancy rebate elimination was not supported by previous council, so I thought I'd try again.
Charlie, could you clarify the dates again, please? Because I thought I heard you say twenty-two, twenty-three, and the report says twenty-one, twenty-two.
Sorry, you're correct. So the, we're twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two. I apologize. I'm thinking of the deadline. It'll be a twenty-twenty-
Because you apply at the end of the-
You apply end of February the following year.
Okay, thank you. All right, so no other questions? The section three fifty-seven tax fields?
Yeah, we had a three fifty-seven adjustment to the tune of twenty-one hundred and one dollars and twenty-six cents. The reason being, the building was razed by a fire.
All right.
And if I may, sort of, Mayor, a couple of finance fun facts. There's some-
You and I'll get excited about it.
Trying to make it interesting. We received new information that'll impact our budget. I thought council might be interested in. Just received an envelope on my desk about the health unit assessment for 2022. We are looking at an annual contribution of seven hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. So your next question is compared to last year. Okay, so last year, our assessment, this is a one point one percent increase over last year's assessment. The way it was, sorry, the way it was budgeted, okay? During the year, we received a thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollar rebate from the health unit. So this is a six point two percent increase over the net amount after the rebate, but a one point one percent increase over what we budgeted last year. Our net expense last year was six sixty-three, nine eighteen fifty-two after the rebate.
All right, so-
Okay. We also have our return rule. So this is net of exempt properties. Our return rule for 2022 is one billion, nine hundred and thirty-eight million, nine hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Last year's return rule, net of exempt properties, is one million, nine hundred and twenty-three million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. An increase of fifteen million, twelve thousand, one hundred dollars. And this is not CVA increase. This is just new builds, upgrades. Most of that increase is actually, all of the increase is residential, because we did have decreases in other classes. That's what we have to work with.
Thank you. General tariff and fees?
So this is a-
Go ahead.
This is a joint report from the senior leadership team, where there are various increases to the different areas. It's broken down within the report for the different divisions. So we'll start with Stace, if he wants to speak to his docking.
And I'm just going to jump in really quick, Stace. Just want to provide a little bit more context for the report. So just wanted to share with council that a number of our fees and tariffs have been static for quite some time and have not been going through regular increases. So really challenged the team to sit down and review and try and come up with a fee structure that was more representative of the true cost of the services being provided. It's important to note, you know, these are user fees. So you're paying for a service, or you're paying for an object, a tax certificate, something like that, and you're getting the value out of that. So this will reduce the subsidization from the general tax base on some of these programs and services. So again, been a while since we've had the opportunity to review these. Want to make sure that we're putting the cost on the people actually benefiting from that program or service. So you're going to see that, this will be focused on community services and finance and corporate services. You'll see some planning and development service fee increases later on. Just wanted to share as well, we won't see solid waste increases today. We're just doing a little bit more due diligence on that, but we'll have a report on that for council in the new year. So just wanted to provide a little bit more context around why you're seeing these now and why we've tried to undertake this review to make sure that the costs are as representative as possible for the current value of providing that service, program, object, et cetera. Thanks, Stace. Why don't you jump in?
So counsel, the first rate increase that you have before you is related to docking. Two things influence this. Number one is we did the service delivery review this year. You recall, docking was a portion of that report. In that report, it was determined that we were not operating on a full-cost recovery basis for our docking assets. So with that in mind, we're putting forward a proposed rate increase over a period of two years. And when we take into account that we've added eight additional slips in Kuwaiton, this will get us fairly close to full-cost recovery in 2024, with a variance there of approximately fourteen thousand dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
We should probably do it that way. We'll ask the questions, counsel, by category, as opposed to going through the entire report and then flipping that, okay? So are there any questions on this? Counselor Smith, please.
Just to comment, I agree that taxpayers should not be subsidizing docking spaces for the use of the dock system and that we have to, our rates should be comparable to the private sector and that we're operating in a full cost recovery system. Yeah, that's the way we want to go, so thanks, Stace, I agree with this.
Counselor Glass?
If we're going on full cost recovery for docking, how far are we going for any sort of cost recovery on launches?
We don't have a mechanism right now to recover any costs associated with launches. There were some things that were put forward in the service delivery review in terms of things that we might want to consider in an effort to generate revenue. There was two options really there. One was to essentially hire a summer student. But given the number of launches that we have, we figured that that would be cost prohibitive. The second thing was to have an honor system. You'll see that done in other communities, where you post a sign and say, you know, you can either put money in a box, or you can go out and contribute towards those launches. So that's not being included in this from a cost recovery standpoint. There's no revenue generation model that we currently have.
As a follow-up to that, though, if I was to launch my boat at the Knorr Rec Center, I do have to pay a fee to leave my boat and trailer, do I not?
You do, and you'll note a significant difference in that, which we'll speak to later in the reports, in terms of revenue generated.
Counselor Smith, again?
And we do have the pay stations now in Kuwaiton, and are they at all of our ramps now?
At Inishinaabe as well. All the ramps, no. There's in Kuwaiton, going on the river, there's nothing there at this time.
And none at BD Park either, right? Is there a pay station?
None at BD Park for the wharf, no.
Okay. Are we keeping track of those revenues coming out of the machines? Because last year was the first year for those paid machines, so have we got an idea of how much revenue we're generating?
Heather?
Yep, the revenue is tracked monthly by the finance department, what comes out of the meters.
Okay.
I just wanted to add as well, the senior leadership team and I have been having conversations about revenue generation. There's some, there's some reviews and research that we need to do to go back and find other ways to generate revenue, and just some of that takes time, and as I'm sure council can recognize, it's been a busy year. So this is sort of the lowest hanging fruit. We decided to start with the fee review, but there's certainly other aspects, you know, things that we've learned from the service delivery review or other, you know, just other research that we need to do to come back to council with more information about things like, you know, cost recovery around boat launches. So we don't have all the answers today, but this was really just about trying to get back to, you know, where we need to be to, you know, I guess subsidize those programs and services to the least degree that we thought was reasonable at this time.
I agree, Kyle, it's a good start.
Stace, on the mooring balls, how would somebody even, like, if somebody said to me, how do I use them? How, where do I pay? What do I do? Because obviously, it's not a big revenue generator for us, but-
It's difficult to police, and it is the honor system.
So where would-
They would contact the rec center.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have the phone number on the balls themselves?
No, we didn't, but thought that would look a little tacky. The balls haven't been replaced this year, this team might know.
Just a big flag up there.
Yeah.
You are going.
All right, community services, Poole?
Yeah, thank you. There's three increases in here, sorry, two increases in our recommendation. Last time rates were increased, were in 2015, for a period of a couple of years. So what we're proposing is a five-dollar increase, if you're seeing it again in multi-years, so that we don't have to come back to council with reports in an effort to try to close subsidy gap. So what we're proposing is five dollars per year in '22, '23, and '24, related to those services that you see on the left of the call. We're proposing a two-dollar-and-fifty-cent increase for the swimming sharks, because the difference in that cost is due to the fact that we don't provide lifeguards. And for the special programming that takes place, asking council to allow staff to look at the inputs in terms of the cost, the cost to deliver a service and have the flexibility to charge based on that, and that would come to me. So business case would be done, it would come to me, and then I would approve the rate based on the business case.
So what would be an example, Stace? Just a point.
Like a special exercise program or something like that, like an aquafit program? You know, just, again, we'll be looking at the resources, so it's the use of Poole, and what sort of staff time we would require to deliver something. And then based on that, we would have a sort of look at other levels of subsidization and try to come in at par.
Anyone else? Okay, corporate services and finance.
Charlotte, do you want to start with yours?
Sure. I will just pick out mine that we've done. And that would include the tax certificate and the duplicate receipt of taxes. So the way finance approached the increase is we got the revenues or the charges from other municipalities in Northwestern Ontario. So it would look like, yeah, we're doubling our fees. However, we're comfortably in the zone of other municipalities, and I think that's where we should be. We haven't increased these rates for quite some time, so it may be a bit of a sticker shock. But having said that, there've been quite a few years of undercharging. So the first two are very comparable to other municipalities in Northwestern Ontario.
NSF is yours, too. Do you want to do NSF as well?
Sorry?
NSF?
Oh, yes, sorry, Kim. And the NSF charge, again, same, same reason, I knew there were three, that this is sort of right in, right in the area of other charges by other municipalities. So now we're competitive. You can bounce a check here or anywhere in Northwestern Ontario and be charged around the same amount.
Okay, so over to the areas that I have included, the Commissioner of both services. Again, I would echo what Charlotte has already said. They are comparables to other municipalities for these services. Commissioner of both services is up five dollars for the two signatures and five dollars for any more. The burial permits, this is a fee we introduced about two years ago, and it does take quite a bit of time, and that usually the requests are fairly quickly, and they want them, a quick turnaround time. This is in line with the cost of what it costs to provide that service. This reserved parking stall, so previously, when the parking meters were in place, we would beg the, in the stalls, so usually a double meter, because most of them were double meters. Those rates have been replaced with the reserved parking stalls. So the process is different now, since there's no meters to beg. Now we have specialized blocking pieces that we put in when someone has reserved a stall. Typically, these are for contractors or for building owners who are looking to do repairs in the building or long-term construction in the building. And there's a cost for reserving those stalls. We have lots of incidents where people remove the barriers. So staff are spending time every day going out and making sure that the stalls are still reserved. So there is a cost to providing this service, and that's why we've established a thirty dollars per stall per day. So there's some new, you will see some new fees that we've implemented. And again, this goes back to just the staff time that it takes to process these things. So refund processing to cover the cost of refunding credits to customers when the credits are not a result of an error that city's done. Obviously, if we did an error, we wouldn't be charging this. The water and POA to transfer to the tax accounts. These are when we're transferring the balances. It has to touch multiple staff in order for those balance transfers to take place. This is a fee that would be added on top of the balance. That is outstanding. The account payment transfers. So often, people will have multiple accounts with us, and they just send in a payment. Takes staff a significant amount of time to try to locate where that payment belongs. Sometimes it's contacting customers. And sometimes it's, we apply the payment, no, that's not the right account. They're having us transfer accounts. So it's a lot of staff time. Again, as previously stated by Charlotte, these are all in line with what other municipalities are charging for these services. And then again, collections fees. So many municipalities add the cost of collection to the customer. So rather than us, the taxpayer bearing the cost of those fees for using the collection agencies and for us gaining the collection efforts, that balance or those costs are put back to the customer. So if we collect your money, thirty percent, which is the average agency fee, is added to those costs. I believe that covers everything in my area.
Could you? Any questions?
Could you clarify then refunding customer credits? Does that mean if customer Jones goes away for six months and leaves a thousand dollars? They sell their home, and so there's four hundred dollars. Before we give them the four hundred dollars that they prepaid us, we take twenty-five dollars?
Typically, and again, we would use these fees at our discretion. Typically, what this is, is someone forgets. They have it on automatic payment. Someone forgets that they no longer have a parking account with us, and they just keep sending us money every month. And then they come back and say, hey, I want my money back. That's where we would charge a fee because there's a cost for us to provide that service in order for us to refund that amount. If it's someone that's just, you know, done something in error or they did something like that, or they've gone away, they kept applying credits and they had a large credit. We would use our discretion in that case. So if no other questions for me, then it would be over to, I'm not sure who wants to take the water increase, but...
But before we talk about the water increase, this is just showing us what it is, right? Based on, we've already assessed.
That just represents the findings from the BMA report and the recommendations, and council saw that report and approved it.
That's your three point one percent for the next four years.
Right, but we've already approved as a group, so I don't think there's any reason...
Just to embed it into the tariff of fees now.
Yes, okay, thank you. So does anybody have any questions overall before we move to the next report? All right, thank you very much. Heather, on the appointment to the crime prevention?
Kyle, do you want to speak to that one? Just the transfer?
Sure. I was initially appointed to this committee. We just didn't have a great place for it to sit, but Kent has come on board and has a real mind for community safety and has graciously volunteered after a little bit of arm twisting. I very much appreciate that, Kent. So I think it'll be, I think Kent's a really good person to have on this committee. He's going to be able to work, you know, hand in hand with OPP and other people around the table and obviously brings a real focus in his day-to-day work around keeping the community safe. So that's really, I just appreciate Kent stepping up to the plate on this one, and I know he'll do a great job representing the city.
All right. Handy Transit Service Agreement.
So I will also, if Counselor Chris wants to add anything, I'll provide a brief overview of this agreement. And Counselor Chris does sit on the Handy Transit Board, so he may have additional feedback that he wants to provide. So the intent of this agreement is not to change the relationship with the Handy Transit Board, but to outline the risks and liabilities of each party and the requirements for the delivery of this service. We've had great discussions at great length with our insurers over the past couple of years just regarding the risk and liability with this arrangement. It's very historical. We've had this relationship well back into the eighties. There is a strong administration, carries a strong role in providing the support services to this board. Charlotte's finance department provides a lot of day-to-day for the accounts payable, accounts receivable, payable services. And then Fleet also carries the administration and mechanical supports for the buses, day-to-day maintenance, and also storage of the buses. So this agreement really outlines what we do and what the responsibilities of the board are. There, upon this review, there are a lot of things that have been identified that the board needs to do differently to minimize the risk to the city. They are the employer, so there are things that they need to change as part of this agreement being put in place. And in the new year, I will be meeting with the board along with supports from some of the members of the senior leadership team to address some of those areas. So right now, the agreement before council is just to say what we're doing today and what the relationship is today. And then outline for primarily our insurers and just to try to ensure that council is aware of what the role is of council and the city and what the role is of the board.
Thank you. Counselor Ben Wellingham?
Yeah, there are some points I'd like to mention too, both as Heather has touched on some of them. But the original agreement was from the eighties. I needed an overhaul with Helen, which Heather and Helen spent a lot of time doing and making changes. The board was incorporated back then, and since then, the city provides support for the board and approves the budget. The board hires employees and establishes service levels. This renewed agreement outlines the risk and liabilities of each party and outlines responsibilities in each area. This basically summarizes it. There are sixty-nine different points in the report. It's covered everything. Next week for the budget presentation, our chair rolls in, and we're becoming, making a budget request. We'll see how things go by then. I'd like to thank Heather and Helen for doing this. They spent a lot of time on it, and I think it's going to work a lot easier. Thanks.
Any questions, council? Counselor Smith?
Heather, do you know what other communities do when it comes to handy transit? Does a city run their, like, that board structure seems strange to me. And is that the way other municipalities run their handy transit, through a board? Or do the cities take it in themselves and manage and run it?
That's a great question. There are very few, when we started this project well over a year ago, there are very, very few municipalities with this unique relationship. It was very difficult and very challenging to structure this agreement in a way that reflects what we do today. In the long run, there needs to be some changes. So again, this agreement is how it stands today. Most municipalities have a transit division, which I don't think we're really in that position to start going down that road. But I would make recommendations when there is going to be several members from our senior leadership team that meet in the new year with the board and start to address some of these things. And there will need to be changes. As recommended by our legal services, let's get the agreement in place of how it stands today, and then we're going to make changes or try to make changes moving forward.
I still see the city exposed to lots of risk, and then I often wonder, well, what if that board walked away? We'd have to take it over anyways, right?
Yeah, there is, there's still definitely risk here. And yes, if they decided to walk away, then we, then the council would have a decision to make as far as if there's going to be a specialized transit service. No different than our conventional transit service. If we were, when the contract comes up for renewal, if no one bids on that contract, then council has a decision to make.
Yeah, thanks, Heather.
So is something we never really had a formalized agreement before?
The agreement that was back from the eighties is about two pages. So it doesn't outline what is active.
This is the starting point, formalize an agreement, and then you work on it.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Accounts receivable collection policy.
Okay. So we have had, and Charlotte, please jump in wherever you want to on this report. So the city's had existing accounts receivable and collection procedures and policies in place for many years. However, we've had no formalized policy. And we have processes which we follow. But over the past several years, and specifically since COVID, we've ran into some challenges when the the collection procedures were somewhat halted due to COVID. So council gave exception to, you know, we're not going to collect during a period of time due to the pandemic and providing some relief to the community. So, you know, sound collection practices minimize the time between when the services are provided and the amount of time that we can collect. We try to minimize that time period as much as possible to, you have a, you have a better chance of success collecting, the sooner you pursue your efforts in those collections. So throughout the pandemic, when that time period was waived, became a bigger, a larger and larger gap between what was outstanding and what we could effectively collect from a lot of these people that had outstanding accounts. So as council knows, we have the right under the municipal act to transfer those balances to the landlords, to the homeowners, the building owners. And you saw an influx of those transfers at that time because of all of these uncollectible accounts. Again, as Charlotte stated earlier, through her receivable or through her write-offs, we still continue those collection efforts. We work with collection agencies. And if we are successful in retaining any of those outstanding balances, they go right back to the tax account to reflect those payments that are received. So this policy is going to outline our practices in writing in a policy that's adopted by council. And it's also going to effectively reduce our risk and exposure to providing information to tenants who have outstanding balances. So often, the landlords are looking for balances that potentially could be transferred to their accounts through the tax transfer process. And under AMPIPA, those balances and that access to that information is, cannot be provided. So this policy is going to solidify our process, outline what information the landlord can receive and when. And it also gives access to people who have outstanding accounts. The landlord can have access to those balances through this policy. So it's very difficult to find the balance, empathizing with the landlords who are at risk of these balances being transferred to their tax accounts and keeping with the enforcement of the legislation and privacy that we must adhere to. I think that's a brief summary. I could get into, you know, how we, what we collect and how we collect, but I'm not sure council wants to hear all that. I've included most of the details in the report. If there's anything specific that council would like me to go over, I'd be happy to do that.
Any questions? Counselor Smith?
Just that we heard very clearly a while ago from the landlords about their inability to be aware of what was going on in their properties and how it was putting them at risk. So this mostly satisfies their concerns and their needs?
I want to be clear, regardless of which option the property owners choose and regardless of how this goes, the property owners are still responsible because we have that ability to transfer that. The municipality is not going to be left on the hook with the water and sewer bills. So these, this will still end up ultimately back to the landlord's accounts, but it's going to give them a whole lot more access to that information, and they will know that those amounts are coming.
That's a good move, then.
Counselor McMillan?
Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this policy also will give a pretty solid base for staff when issues are there. There's a policy to fall back on. There's a process agreements, all that sort of stuff signed, which has been, I think, a difficulty for staff in the past, trying to intervene on issues between landlords and tenants and bills and information. So I see it from that perspective as positive.
Yes, a lot of our practices, what will happen is the public will ask us, well, where is that? What policy is that? So this policy captures everything that we do as far as payables, receivables, and our collection process, and identifies how we do that. So our practices that we've been doing for many years will now be included in this policy.
So I want to thank Heather very much for her work on both of the last two reports. She's taken all the old cave drawings and put them down into, and put them down into really lengthy and comprehensive policies. So it's a lot of work that goes in. So just thanks to Heather for all that.
Thanks, Heather.
And this has been vetted through legal, so he is satisfied with the avenue that we chose to take.
All right. We'll move to the Harborfront Downtown and the Ambassador Pilot Program. Roberta?
Thank you. The intent of this report is to provide council with recommendation on how administration to continue its services to the downtown and harbor front area in light of the transfer of those services coming back to the city. The harbor front area is a priority for council and for our community, and it represents a key area for economic development and tourism. Back in two thousand and, sorry, earlier this year, in October, when we had received information around the transfer of those services coming back, the city undertook an internal review of its current workforce plan and service delivery model to take a look at how we would then best provide those services. The scope of that review was then broadened to include community feedback from our 2021 community survey as well as the 2021 OPP police survey. During both those surveys, safety, crime, and the impacts of social issues were identified as key concerns for that region. Administration developed a workforce plan to ensure service continuity of the street beautification, cleaning, and maintenance, but also took to undertake another workforce plan type of a program to say, how do we best address the other issues? We're coming forward with two recommendations. So it's two parts. The first part being continuity of the business or the street beautification, cleaning, and maintenance services. That is really a transfer of the one hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred that was initially there for PINE's KHS contract. That, those funds would then be used to support full-time staff, one additional labor, Harbor Town labor, as well as two labor helper types of roles. That'd be a full year. So they would come in, right starting January one, and would work all year. The second part of the report really outlines the new Harbor Town Ambassador Pilot Program. And this program is really designed to support some of the other, you know, important priorities of the community and really would have a couple of key goals, and that is to activate our city spaces, continue with clean and beautiful streets and green space, provide visible, friendly, and knowledgeable resources to our citizens and those visitors, as well as managing and mitigating risk associated with the downtown. And also really building on innovative collaborative partnerships with many of our community leaders in the space of providing supports to the downtown area and to our residents and business community. So the financial commitment for the new Harbor Town Ambassador Pilot Program, which would really be delivered between May first and September, so this is a trial year to see how we best align with other community partners to provide services in that region. We were looking for a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. At this point, we are in active conversations with a number of our community partners who are equally excited about the opportunity to work together with the city and to collaborate in this space to provide a more visible service for all. So that, those conversations continue. But in that ad, that would provide some additional opportunity for summer students to perform ambassador... ambassador type of duties, uh where they would be walking through regular, uh on a regular routes throughout the city, greeting people, getting to know businesses, getting to know community members, and working together with our partners, as well as activating our tourism group uh in a way that aligned with the schedule and really focusing on activation in a variety of different areas.
Council? Counselor McMillan?
Thanks, Roberta. Um, I think this really has the opportunity for a good news story. Um, just just to clarify, and I think you did it right at the beginning, um, there's basically two programs. The one, start January first, the continuation of the existing program. And then once the um uh community partners bring forward funding, the community ambassador program will start May first. That's the target to start, and then there will be a review of that for looking at ongoing continuation. So um, it's it's a reinforcement of the existing program then. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The pilot program for the ambassadors, the uh the city would be leading the ambassador portion of the program, working together with our community partners. We're looking at really the high peak time to trial out this model and to align and see if we can a- adjust based on the needs. Uh, we're really looking for the feedback of our business community, of our residents, of our visitors, and of, you know, just uh the feel, uh to see how how things shape out. That way we will be able to determine whether the program met its met its objectives and whether we want to continue on a full-time basis.
If I could, Your Worship?
Yes, please.
Just wanted to add a few more comments. Um, you know, I think everybody has heard pretty loud and clear from the public about some of the concerns that they've had around cleanliness and and around um just being able to utilize the Harborfront. And so uh, we really took the time, we've researched best practices in other communities, we've looked at other uh communities offering similar programs. So, you know, we heard loud and clear from the public that they wanted to see something different. Uh, so we've we've, you know, done our due diligence to come back with something that we think will um demonstrably improve uh some of the challenges that we're seeing down at the Harborfront. And we've tried to do it in a way that really focuses on what is within our municipal mandate. Uh, where, you know, something doesn't necessarily align with our municipal mandate, we are working out in partnership with all of these other agencies, you know, rather than trying to operate in silos, that's something else, you know, that we hear loud and clear from members of the public. They want to see us working together with our other partners and agencies, so we're really leaning into that, uh having lots of conversations to try and figure out how we can best support one another. So I think that's that's very important. Um, the last thing that I just wanted to say is, you know, they say all good things must come to an end. I just really wanted to take the opportunity to uh express the city's gratitude for the good work that Pines uh KHS has done for many years. Uh, you know, going back to the days of Buck Medeiroski, providing those services down at the Harborfront. Uh, they've been uh an asset for the community for quite some time. And so, uh, you know, in hearing that they would not be, uh, you know, entering into a contract again in 2022, we've gone back and tried to figure out how we can best continue to uh carry on the good work that Buck and his team started down at the Harborfront while also trying to address the challenges that we are facing and and take, you know, the communication that we're getting from the public and try something different to try and and break the pattern downtown. So I just wanted to provide that context and add on because um this isn't something that that we've sort of just come up with internally. We've really looked at best practices across other municipalities, researched to figure out how we can try and bring something uh here that will be just as successful as it has been in other places. And again, I just want to thank Pines KHS group for all their great work over the years. Uh, they've been a real, you know, a real asset for the community, and so thanks to them.
Any other questions?
Roberta, could you expand on the uh Harbor Town Ambassador Pilot Program? Is it a Monday to Friday, nine to five type program, or is there more to it than that?
Yeah, so we're looking at expanding services to seven days, uh as well as increasing our time. So uh, looking at the different services um that we would be providing, which is really three different components. There's a cleaning and beautification or maintenance program, a portion, there's tourism and an activation of of uh events and so on, as well as uh the park or the downtown ambassador. Um, so this service would really look at, and we're we're in conversation right now with uh our business community to understand, what are the bookends of time, you know, is it is it helpful? How late should we be planning uh to ensure that we can provide safe walk to citizens as they are finishing up at a restaurant? Uh, or maybe uh connecting with a business who has to do a bank drop at certain times. Uh, so making sure that we have not only early morning activity where we're ensuring that the streets are cleaned and beautiful for businesses and residents to come down, but also on the later ends to keep our community vibrant into the evenings and on the weekends when there is a lot more uh people downtown. So really looking at expanding the service uh in a variety of different ways.
Thank you. Alright, if no other questions or comments, then we will move to engineering and infrastructure. Kevin, your first one is the tree cutting services.
Thank you, Your Worship and council, uh for this opportunity request, uh um your support in accepting the submission by United Tree Service for the hourly rates for tree cutting and sun drying. Um, we do a significant amount of work in the in this area, and and this is just to align with the work that that is required to go forward. Uh, as you can see, the rates are submitted uh below, uh and there was only uh one tender that was received.
Questions, comments? Alright, thank you. And then very thorough Q three or Q four report.
Thank you, Your Worship, once again. Uh, I would like to take this opportunity that uh I would I would like that council's feedback on uh what they would like to see uh from uh the engineering and infrastructure services team as far as uh future quarterly reports. Uh, as you can see that we've provided a fair amount of detail, and I just want to align with uh council's requirements. So if they can keep that in mind, once I I present uh our Q four report, uh I'm willing to adjust to to ensure we're meeting the requirements of council. As you can see, uh fleet services uh made uh annotations of vehicles and equipment that were purchased uh this uh this past quarter. But there was also five uh vehicles that were actually um carried over due to uh several issues, uh semiconductor issues within the industry, uh and obviously the delays in manufacturing due to COVID. Uh, I'm going to go on to our uh CDOR uh program. Uh, so the city hired a consultant in order to go through the CDOR operation uh program. Uh, this is a huge milestone for the organization, and and I have to point out the great efforts by the team in order to ensure that they they adjusted to the recommendations, they moved forward, and they hit the mark on every single one of them. So with with the aid of Jerry and Haley specifically, uh who who held this program in check, uh continuously readjusted to ensure that they met these requirements for the safety of of the community and and their fleet. Um, so this was a great undertaking, as you can see within the report. It 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 was refreshing uh to see this level of uh input. Uh, there's some recommendations that have come forward uh through this internal audit, and we're looking forward to seeing how we can explore those for future adaptation and increase the safety component uh of our fleet. So this this is a really good news story for for our team. Also, we we had some problems with uh one of our piece of equipment. And uh, you know, the the rubber tire uh loader that we had actually failed, the transmission failed twice. So new new newer vehicle, uh only used about ten percent of its life cycle. Um, and we had some ongoing discussions with Volvo. Uh, Volvo wanted us to pay, I believe it was in the realm of sixty-five thousand dollars for the repair of the transmission. And along with uh uh our fleet manager, myself, we've had some very um stern conversations with Volvo on our expectations when we purchase equipment through through yes, yes.
Sorry, I was gonna stop next to that.
Through through the organization. So um, we we had some very stern and open conversations with Volvo on our expectations when we purchase vehicles. And and because of these ongoing negotiations and conversations, uh Volvo agreed and was able to um come forward and cover those costs. Now we're looking at potential warranty through Volvo, uh as we've we we want to be hopeful that these these repairs that were initiated in this expensive piece of equipment are the last time we're going to see it. Um, however, this is the second time this transmission's been done. So we wanted to make sure there's f- future protection against us for for any repairs. So um, those conversations are still going forward, but it's a good good news story of, you know, determination by our fleet manager once again to ensure that we're getting every dollar that's worth uh of equipment within our fleet.
Kevin, if I could stop you, and Counselor Smith, could I ask you to step back again, please?
Oh, yeah.
So we'll go back to CDOR. Uh, was any, do we have any questions on that? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Your Worship.
Nope, that's that was on me, that was on me.
Um, in the month of October, there uh there was an incident, as everybody's aware, within uh our um tandem pack truck that was tipped over. Um, we we just received confirmation from the insurance, uh the reviewer, that the vehicle is a write-off. Um, so we're we're looking at where that stands at this point. So there's further discussions going forward on the potential replacement of the equipment uh and what those those costs could be, uh and what portion are insurable versus uh life cycling. Um, because the vehicle, from what I hear, is a two thousand and fourteen. Uh, so therefore, the depreciation depreciation value of it uh versus the insurability will we'll have more information for council, and we'll come forward with a report once uh all that is is tabulated. Any questions on that, I mean, Your Worship?
No, we're good.
Uh, also between September first and November thirtieth, uh point out that the work totaled eighteen hundred and twenty-nine point two-five hours on two hundred and twenty vehicles and pieces of equipment uh to support every uh every division. The team completed twenty-two annual safety inspections and fifty-six preventive maintenance services in addition to the regular repairs and maintenance. So a lot of hard work by that team.
Kevin, is the team at its full complement? Are you still looking for members?
I I'd have to verify, Your Worship. I believe they're looking for uh one more position, from what I understand. And we're also exploring uh um other uh funding sources which which may present other other opportunities for our fleet team, which will um will bring to council once we have more detailed information.
Could you add anything, Roberta?
Sure, actually, the a good news is the fleet is actively involved in the in apprenticeship program, uh so providing some supports to apprentices as well as doing some recruitment. Uh, we are ensuring, we have them working very closely with the manager of fleet to ensure that we have continuity in his workforce plan. Uh, from time to time, areas have uh situations where they're reduced, not because somebody has left, but maybe there's, you know, an absence for medical purpose or something like that. We've ensured that 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 continuity is maintained uh through different staffing strategies.
Thank you.
Onto the roads department. Uh, as you can see, there's a a lot of the roads department really wanted to take an opportunity to present uh what they do on a regular basis within um this wonderful community. So, you know, providing visual uh opportunities to to show the extent of their work. Um, they're they're very proud of what they do, they're a very busy team. Um, and instead of going through every single uh slide here, I wanted to make sure that you understood that they wanted to provide the the level of detail and understanding the efforts that they they did through the quarter. I will move now to the bottom of the report um to hit the main uh part of the season, um which is the plowing of nineteen uh the the snow removal efforts. Um, so they've adapted to their staffing requirements in order to meet uh the snow maintenance requirements or the winter maintenance uh requirements for the city. There's been some pilot projects that they have uh taken initiatives of of using more salt in certain areas to see on how that reacts in certain temperature areas and certain areas within uh the community. So they are really trying to find the best mixture or requirement that would enable uh us to do our work uh while still uh providing uh the best services uh in the meantime. So the seasonal night shift started uh November twenty-first for the removal of snow in the downtown core. Removal of snow in the city uh owned parking lots, it shows uh the ones that uh that they that they perform. They also uh plow nineteen accessible uh parking locations, shoveling accessibility ramps in city-owned stairs, sixteen separate locations. Uh, the the contractor uh have met the current requirements this year with the delivery of um uh seventy-three hundred metric tons of sand for the winter maintenance and a total of four hundred four metric tons of bulk of bulk salt. I I want I want council to understand that the salt mixture that they use in the sand currently i- is just used for a binding agent. So it's to stop the the sand from basically uh freezing together, so it can be spread easy. Um, it it has very little effect on the road for de-icing purposes. Um, so we're we're looking at different opportunities, and like I explained, we use pure salt mixtures in certain areas. Uh, and then others, we've tried um multiple strategies. And we'll continue to explore how other communities uh do it and what the best practices are out there. Any questions on?
Counselor Smith?
Would you just go back to the salt thing, and we've talked about this o- over the years. Are some of those um regulations about salt, or are the regulations about salt driven by the Ministry of Environment?
Yes, there there's some requirements that getting over certain amounts of salt requires uh activation of a uh review of your salt management uh plan. Uh, and it it's a recommendation and best standards and practices, which which means that if it has a negative impact on the environment, you have to explain why you didn't develop a plan when you're over that criteria. So we put it into next year's budget uh in order to allow us a greater opportunity to um utilize the salt, uh but yet understand its impact to the infrastructure, vehicles, and the environment.
We look forward to the results instead.
Thank you. The water and wastewater division, uh they, uh there's some reports here, I'm just going to go through one at a time and see if there's any questions on them. The first, the first report here uh is for the water treatment plant for the the generator.
I did chime that off.
That's your second fine, Counselor Smith.
Hide it.
They're 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 continuing with the uh the installation of it, um and we're hoping for it to be uh finished next quarter. Um, the wastewater plant grid separator raking mechanism. This work is going to start in the beginning of January. Uh, we are hoping to get it moving uh in December. However, there were some changes within the contract that we had to ensure were made uh for the protection of um the city. Uh, we now have a maximum upset limit of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that contract, and it was budgeted for three hundred thousand. The previous contract that that was presented to us had no maximum upset limit. So it it um, in my opinion, it was uh it was a requirement, especially when you're working with uh um time and material contract. The replacement, next one is they're replacing existing uh pitless uh piping structure and check valve assembly. Um, when the report was uh was completed, um the equipment still was not received yet uh from the information from the information that was presented as far as the valving. So, we're hoping to get that taken care of. We've definitely found through the industry a difficulty in acquiring and procuring equipment on time. And obviously, with a lot of the equipment coming from overseas and the unbelievable travesty in B.C., then coming off B.C. containers and receiving equipment is just a cost more of an issue. I'll move on to the environmental services division. As you can see, our manager did a fantastic job here in helping provide a lot of statistical information on the landfill. I felt that this was a great opportunity. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get him into the third quarter report, but we wanted to ensure that we provided some statistical information of, you know, the type of activity that we've seen in there. October seems to be one of those months that everybody did a lot of fall cleanup late and we received a lot more solid waste come through the area. And the team managed it with longer reviews. They're doing a fantastic job out there. Construction demolition waste was one of the items that I was quite surprised on. I thought that there would be a lot more potential waste coming in September. But if you can see, in October, it almost doubled in nature. And we were able in November to go back to normal amounts, but it's really interesting on the effect of trying to complete work at the end of the year and trying to stretch it out as long as you can with the weather. Is there any questions with regards to the solid waste portion?
Nope, looks good.
Onto the engineering portion, the stormwater area. So, the tender was issued on the 17th and the easement agreements were obtained. The current untended additional work is to be undertaken in the 2022 under the railway street phase two. So, that's all ready to go. And they can't wait to get through the next two phases. They're really looking forward to that and I quite assure you that so is the proponents who work in the area. As you can see, the accomplishments for the municipal paving program. They were able to get quite a bit of work done this year with the allocation that was put in place. Darlington Drive, Highway 17 East. And as per the budget, you know, there's a continuation of that area as well. Onto the sanitary storm, sewer and storm CCTV and flushing inspection. This is one of those items that is going to play a part in parcel when we do our infrastructure study. The information that we get from this type of work is immensely important for us to do our job properly and to be able to understand how we prioritize the requirements within the allocation of priorities within our system on what we do next. So, the condition reports and the assessments by doing these are extremely important. Landfill phase one, for the construction there, the majority of the work is all done except for the, from what I understand, is that due to the, some of the delays, they're going to have to come back in the spring in order to do some additional laying on the surface in order to polish it off and finish off the project. As everybody's aware, phase two, the railway street, happened last year with some great success. They temporarily energized the area until the work begins in 2022 for the following phase. Central Park infrastructure works. I was really pleased with the fact that they were able to show some of the drilling and the work that happened in the area with the picture. It was really great to see the level of professionalism that I saw in there. I've only seen the mechanism of being able to drive across pipes across the road like that twice my career. So, it was really good to see the technology come to Canora, where it reduced the impact of traffic while ensuring that project still moved forward. Capital Bridges, Beggs, Arch, Culvert and Lesje Ness Bridge. Some delays is where the Counsel is aware of. The project had satisfactory budgetary aspects, even with some of the changes that happened through the project. But they met all their requirements. No further reporting is required on this item unless Counsel has some additional questions. So, at this time, you know, I'm up for any suggestions or opportunity for Counsel to express on what they would like added or potentially removed from the report, what level of detail they would like to see on further quarterly reports. And we'll do our best to continuously adjust to this to meet your requirements.
Counsel, Counsel for you, please.
Thanks, Your Worship. Kevin, so this is great. Again, I think I'm just echoing what other members of Counsel said, that we've never received this kind of detailed report before from any department. So, it's good to have. Just a couple of things, because in the budget, we approve for replacement of equipment and so on and so forth. And to be quite honest with you, in that once, if I put my hand up and approve the budget, staff, appropriate staff, go ahead and purchase graders and stuff. And I'm just wondering for time saving, does that kind of information really have to be in the report? Just to save you a bit of time, just my own comment. The other thing is, great detail, but when we're looking at sidewalks and some of the larger areas that you do surface, like repaving, asphalting, like city stuff, is there any, do you do like any type of job costing? Because I, people always say they never spend any money on sidewalks or whatever, whatever. If we had some of that detail to go along with these pictures, this is great. To say, no, we did spend $114,000 on sidewalk replacements or whatever it was, because for some reason, some people in the community don't believe you when you say, yeah, they did replace sidewalks. All you have to do is drive around and see. But if you can attach a cost, and again, without creating a lot of work, if within your internal accounting, if that's something that's done, if that could be added to that portion of the report, that'd be great. Just, it would be pertinent information to have when you're trying to explain to people that, you know, money is being spent in those areas.
Through to the Chair, thank you very much for the comments. One of the main reasons we wanted to put the vehicles on the report was because it was a procurement item, just to explain if there was any delays or if the procurement actually was successful. If Counsel wishes and allows us to remove that from that report, we're more than happy to do that and just provide it at a year-end report.
Anyone else? Counsel Chase?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick question about the back truck that's out of commission at the moment. Do we have more than one back truck? Is there a backup or do we have a contingent here?
No, we only currently have one back truck and what we've done is we've supplemented with contracted services in the meantime.
Thank you.
Kevin, personally?
This isn't my area of expertise. When I get pictures, they miss it, you know, out here, oh yeah, we're doing culvert flushing. Well, when you actually see what the culvert looked like before flushing and after, it gives you an idea of the work involved and how it almost looks like it's a predestined culvert, just because it's been maintained properly. So, I really appreciate the visuals, especially the before and afters. And, you know, I can take this report now and put it in a file and people come in and say, that was a poor invention. Yeah, I've done, what are you doing? It's like, oh, just go, if you've got an hour, I'll show you what they've been doing. So, there's great information. We saw it last month and we're going to see it, you know, when Stace comes forward with this. I don't know if we need them quarterly, I don't know. But, you know, since we've been getting, we get great information and while we're on the topic, like even the weekly updates we get on, you know, the snow, it's just like, that information goes, it means the world. I can only speak for myself, but I think when I see the nods around the table.
We don't, yeah. We don't know if this is correlation or causation yet, but Kevin, how much has your complaints gone down since we've started sharing that information with Counsel? I think it's interesting.
Yeah, a rough estimate of the amount of complaints since we took this small communication initiative between myself and the roads manager has decreased our call volume about 60% in complaints. So, if there's some feeling or communication that's coming from Counsel, we appreciate it. Every level of effort, the amount of time it takes to manage a complaint, removes capabilities, the staff being able to be out in the field to do what they do well.
Counsel McMillan?
Kevin, I think we've all talked about the report and different areas. The one area that I find very informative is the solid waste, particularly around the transfer station, because that's got to be one of the busiest places in town, especially in the summertime on a Sunday or Saturday. And the information that goes in there, because I think with some in the general public, there's really not an understanding of the amount of waste that's done and the recycling that's done. If I may mention Mukesh with his ideas about composting and some pretty progressive thoughts. So, I think that's the type of information that's very valuable. And the other one with respect to any suggestions, if through Kyle, if we think about things, if we could just forward them through Kyle and just send them to you as well? Any suggestions or thoughts? So, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Through to the Chair, thank you very much. Our solid waste team is looking at different initiatives all the time, to no landfill disposal technology, to composting. I've been trained in composting in way back, way, way, way back. So, the shared system and how it could be valuable in this community is definitely one of those things that we can explore and potentially be the leader of the north in ensuring sustainability for all the communities around us. So, we are looking at different initiatives and understanding our impact, not only our community, but to the northern region.
Counselor Smith?
Now, we used to have, in the wintertime, because that's the information everybody wants now, what's happening with the roads all the time, right? I think we used to have an interactive map on our website that showed which roads would be plowed and when. And I'm not sure, but the information that you're providing, I mean, this is great information for Counsel, but it's even better information for our constituents. So, is there a way that we can think about getting this information out more often to the public? Is there that interactive map on the website that shows what roads are going to be plowed? And can this additional information be attached to that? So, people have a place to go when they're looking for that kind of information.
I'm going to ask Heather, just, she would have the most knowledge into the website, just with Kevin and I being newer. So, do you recall that tool, is there?
Yep, so we do have, so what is on the website is not interactive. It's not showing you where the plow goes, because that would be the GPS tracking.
Right, yeah.
Which you do see in other places, but the tool that we have on the website is your priority route. So, it identifies what your, what you are, your road is rated, so when they're going to get to you in the event of a snowfall. So, you can identify that my street is a four or a four, we're not going there for three days. You know, breaks it down into what the priority routes are and how long it will be before those routes are plowed.
Is there an opportunity?
Customers can go out, but I will defer to Kevin on the whole interactive, we probably referred to, on the whole interactive vehicle.
So, maybe I've seen that in some other place.
Yeah, there are places that.
So, I guess my next question is, when there are, you know, weather incidents or something, is getting some of this information up on the Facebook page, which is really the medium that most people want to use? Because this is what constituents are looking for in the wintertime is, you know, when my road going to be plowed, what are the actions going to be following the storm? So, I'm just talking about communication here, Kevin.
Well, through the Chair, our new policy that we want to bring forward with regard to our snow maintenance will have, hoping for it to be comprehensive in nature. To understand, communication is the key to success in everything we do and understanding the service levels we can provide. We currently have a tool within the organization, it's called Wingsfield, that has GPS on our vehicles that we potentially could explore as an opportunity that our team uses to understand what's being accomplished and what's not being. I've seen interactive tools in other communities being utilized effectively and I've seen where they're not as effective. And I see people taking advantage of understanding if the plow's going to be there, that, you know, there's some disruptions if they're not happy with certain levels of service, stopping the equipment operators in order to try to get a different level of service. There's many different factors that we have to take into consideration when we put our staff out in the field. If it's a delay, if it's a different understanding, if it's communication versus roads. And unfortunately, we work in an environment that has its priorities. If we have a water main break and we've made a priority saying we're going to do a certain road and we have to shift our resources elsewhere, letting individuals down, we have to answer to those call volumes as well. So, we're going to try to find a Canora fit for all the uniqueness that is Canora and ensure that Counsel has the opportunity to choose which direction they would like us to proceed in.
And you know, you make a good point about levels of service. People just need to hear that stuff. Like, you know what, we've got a storm surge here, we've got two graders on the road, we've got 600 kilometers of paved road to plow. That puts it in perspective for people, so all they're looking for is good information.
Absolutely.
And just leading up to that, I understand that when we get tenders for additional equipment for when we do have weather events, we still have no additional equipment, is that the way it is?
Not at this point. We have no subcontractor in place. We're working on trying to work out how we're going to proceed with that. Some of it has to do with the insurance and the warranty, the insurance requirements that we require as a community in order to ensure the safety of the community and to ensure they're operating within the same parameters that we require for all contractors.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, seen no other comments. Thank you very much, Kevin. We'll move to Stace. And your first one is the ICIP funding applications.
Thank you. So, the report for you, Counsel, is that Counsel directs administration to apply for Infrastructure Canada funding. Part of this commitment would be that the city can or confirms its financial commitment of one up to 1.333 million. And part of the stipulation of the funding application is that Counsel hereby approves any expenditures for expenses that are deemed to be ineligible and also that Counsel would agree to any overruns associated with the project, projects. By way of background, Counsel may recall that in 2019, staff had submitted two very large applications to this funding envelope and we were turned down. But other municipalities in the area were actually successful in their application. So, surprisingly, on December 7th, an email came and asked if we would still be interested in submitting an application. When you look at the next couple of years of capital spend that are related to the REC Center, relative to the 1.33 million... that are related to the REC Center relative to the one point three three million, our, our, our investment is actually exceeds that minimum threshold. The timing of this is, it's a five-year project. So if you start to look at spend over subsequent years, from my perspective, you can get to one point three fairly quickly when you look at the five-year capital plan that would have been rolled out. So essentially, for what we would normally be spending anyway, the, the funding envelope is basically three point six seven million. So it's, it's rather significant. So this is to ask that staff be able to submit that application. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Counselor Pori, please.
Thanks, you were to, to stay. So if we are successful with the application, and when it comes forward, can you also provide what, just to jog our memories, what, what that would entail, like that money, like for, because I, I can remember some of them, but not many of them.
Yeah, if you go to page two, it actually, again, you know, subject to change, because this is a longer-term project, but some of the things that we would have contemplated would be the replacement of the roof.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. Dry pad replacement. We recall when we did Kuwaiton, it was around a million dollars. We put a placeholder of one point four million for that, the walking track. Moving the tennis courts in our five-year plan, we would have identified that. Some enhancement, significant enhancements to the baseball diamonds and some other stuff that we would just be doing as part of our normal end-of-life repair.
So basically what happened was, we had our initial capital budget meeting. We looked at the five years and this opportunity presented itself after. So we're going to make an application. If we're successful, is it then we'll amend our capital budget because we're going to have to move projects forward, right? Because some of these projects are a couple of years down. So it's a great opportunity to get a lot of work done with funding that was not previously anticipated when we looked at that budget initially.
Seventy-four cent dollars.
Wow.
All right, so.
And just for a little bit more context, the ISIP program has been rather aggressive in seeking information from Stace, which I would hope lends itself well to the possibility that that funding would come through.
All right, Stace, and you have another application for the NOHFC.
Yes, so this would be that council hereby authorizes staff to submit a number of applications under the NOHFC through conversation with our local representative. Sort of just talked about projects that we have underway in our current capital plan. Those plans are, those projects for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three can be consolidated and broken out. So there's going to be a number of different applications going in, and I've listed what those applications are there. So seeking your approval for that.
Any comments? And same scenario as we talked about before, is the opportunity now presents itself. These are all, you know, you look at the Muse rehab work, that was all coming out of reserves somehow. If we're successful.
Yeah, there's no incremental spend to the city as a result of this. These are seventy-five cent dollars up to five hundred thousand dollars per project. You know, I've got seven projects listed there.
All right, thank you. Application on behalf of the Rotary Peace Park?
Right, so this report is related to an application that the Rotary Club is putting together under the same NOHFC funding as the previous report that you would have just seen. This is related to the Peace Park and the monuments related to missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, transgender and two-spirit persons. It's rolling that project up. The reason that the application has to come in from the city is, you'll recall that Rotary actually is entered into a lease and both those two groups have a memorandum of understanding, but the park itself is owned by the municipality and therefore the municipality has to do the application.
So Stace, what kind of expenses are the, what, what is the project submitting? What's the ask?
There, there's three elements. There is the peace pole itself, there's the monument itself, and then there's all of the capital upgrades that they're going to do as part of refurbishing the green space there, walkways, maybe some planters and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I, I really want to applaud the team. As Mayor Raynard has stated, a lot of this funding came up very suddenly and it is a busy time of year, but the team has done an excellent job pivoting and finding projects that align with the funding criteria. So I just want to thank the team because they've dropped everything that they were doing to make sure that we could get these applications in to try and secure funding, you know, to protect our reserves and to limit the exposure from the net tax levy. So thanks very much to the team for all that hard work.
Good work, Stace.
Okay, we'll move next to the agreement with the monument space.
Correct, so you'll recall that, well, the report before you is that mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into an agreement with the, with the murdered and missing transgender and two-spirit persons for the Peace Park. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, it's very similar to the MOU that we would have done with Rotary. And this is just to get that executed.
Counsel? All right. And your Q four services report, please, Stace.
Yep, just before I get going with this, I'd just like to acknowledge the work of staff. This is staff's work here. This is, you know, council gives us a capital budget and an operating budget on an annual basis. And these quarterly reports give us an opportunity to come back to you and show us the great work that's being done. So with that, I'll just do a quick page flip, if you don't mind. The before and after is a little bit interesting in that there's no ice in the, the arena when the pictures are taken. So, you know, it overstates the, the difference, but let's just say that anybody who's been to the REC Center to see those LED lights that have been installed, they're absolutely phenomenal. What's interesting about them is they actually have electronics built into them so that you can control the intensity with your smartphone. So, you know, latest and greatest, it's a seventy thousand dollar capital project.
Who's smartphone?
Yeah, not yours. Next project is the, the Norman Accessibility Project. We got some funding from that and council put some money towards that as well. But this is amazing addition to the Norman Park. And, you know, going into two thousand twenty-two, if you look at the first picture there, you actually see the playground in the background. So that's going to be replaced next year as well, but just a great project. And now somebody can actually go from the handicap parking spot beside the splash park, go to the splash park, take that accessible trail down to the, right down to the beach and go on the Moby Mat, and somebody with a wheelchair can actually enjoy the lake. Doing a page flip, we had to do some repair work on the abutment where the Coney Island Foot Bridge attaches. We did some work down at Ops where we took some old sheds and replaced them with something new. We replaced the roof at the wastewater treatment plant. We've done a number of dock upgrades in Q, Q four, just before freeze. There's some pictures there showing that. Just some improvement to the infrastructure, the lighting standards. You can see how rust plays havoc, so staff would have gone and, you know, treated that and repainted it. A number of other infrastructure that the city has, including a drop-off spot for garbage where the building was just getting quite tired. So as Sean says, it needed a hug. One exciting project that we did this year was we actually had a independent consultant come in and do an assessment of our trees. Links in well with what RC Strategies was just saying. We installed seventeen new trees at a very number of different locations. And what we're doing is we're trying new species to see how they respond in, in our environment. We purchased some equipment for the baseball diamonds, which allows us to, you recall that historically we've taken fencing and kind of crumpled it up and dragged it. This actually allows us, it has teeth and it pulls up the, not only the, the grass and that, but it actually helps to kind of fluff the field, the infield, if you will. So it's just something that can, you know, when they're cutting the grass, they can bring this attachment on the trailer, attach it to the back of the long tractor and very quickly improve the ball diamond surface, which will help with drainage as well. Flipping to Gerro Park, you'll see where the excavator is and the nose of the excavator. What happened was over time, the grass was just growing in. And what we've done is we've gone and we've reclaimed all of that to extend the beach. So it's, you know, I see the mayor nodding at me, I know that you walked it.
Did you move, no, I never even noticed it, because the snow is down, right?
Yeah.
When I saw this picture, I thought, you know, it's, it was always such a, you know, like you said, it was growing and growing and growing. Did you remove rocks too to enhance the beach?
I would have to get back to you on that. I, I, I mean, they had equipment down there. It was, it was largely just grass creep that was going in. And we just decided to expand the beach area, basically.
So Stace, then my question would be, are there any plans to add additional docking for, to, so kids can go in? Because right now, when it's busy day, the current dock's underwater almost, because, you know, there's so many kids in the area. Is there any future plans or is that something we could look at maybe long-term?
Yeah, I would say duly noted to that. There's nothing currently in the plan. One of the things that we put in the, one of the applications is to leverage our docking investment. So if we're successful in doing that, that will bring new money into the capital program and it'll give us some opportunity to look at things like that.
Thanks.
Over time, no different than the grass creep, the, the headstones, they float all over the place. So I can't remember the number, but it was a significant number where they went in, pulled it, pulled them and then repacked them and then placed them back so they are far more cycling. Turning, turning a page, you see the difference that the tree well project has made in downtown. And we will continue to do that. And those are just invasive trees that were growing up in the tree well. So this allows us to replace it with that rubber crumble with a resin. And again, that product allows water to go through it. Then moving over to recreation and tourism, number of different events at the REC Center, or sorry, at the Discovery Center. We had the Science North Guinness Book of World Records exhibit from September third to the October fourteenth. We had the Science North, I'm sorry, that's with our partners from Science North. We also did the Science Week and Carnival from September twentieth to the twenty-fifth. There was a big kickoff to that, which is the picture that you see before you underneath the white cap. We did the truth and reconciliation powwow on Orange Shirt Day. You can actually see members from this room represented in the back room. There was the lighting of the tree on November nineteenth with our partner, Harbor Town Biz. We reopened the pool on Octo, or sorry, on August thirtieth after COVID restrictions listed, or lifted, sorry. We had our first hockey tournament on November nineteenth to the twenty-first. We did the conversion. You'll recall that we had an in-year capital budget amendment because our vendor who was providing us with Max Galaxie said that that product was end-of-life. So we had to do a conversion of all of our data at the REC Center into what's called the Active Net Platform. We've done, done a number of different projects which are listed there at the REC Center related to just normal wear and tear or in Kuwaiton. What's noteworthy is that we had the report done by TSSA related to the waterside, allowing us to reopen the water slide. And now we've got a report where we can in two thousand twenty-three and subsequent years do work there to, you know, stay within standard. The data that you see before you here is kind of, it's confusing because the column says January to December, it's actually January to November. So in an effort to bring what you would have seen as a quarterly report from REC, we're now dovetailing it into this report. So the, the numbers are, are not, you know, twelve month and twelve month, it's twelve month and eleven month. But what you see here is the effects of COVID. And how drastic it's been, you know, year over year. And there are talks about when we open things and that. Doing a page flip and you looking at the, our rentals that we have for the, the rinks, you can again see the COVID impact. And also for the fitness center, recognizing that that's eleven month and not twelve month. Doing a page flip, flipped parking revenue for the REC Center. It's interesting to me that you'll see that revenue went up at the REC Center by twelve thousand, or twenty-two thousand dollars year over year. And council approved debt finance for financing for a park, parking project at eight hundred thousand dollars. So based on this year's revenue, that would show almost a ten-year return on your investment for those upgrades there. So, but the, the incline year over year as a percentage is quite significant. And baseball diamonds, again, comparable to the years. I think in two thousand twenty, the way the COVID restrictions were put into place, it had a greater impact on baseball than what you would have seen in two thousand twenty-one. And then there's a very detailed list of some of the programming that we would have offered at the REC Center in the, in the final quarter. And that is our quarterly report.
Questions or comments, counsel? All right, thank you, Stace.
Again, any feedback just on, you know, information that you'd like to see or information that you don't need to see, just let us know.
Adam? You're up first with the amendments to fees?
Yeah, so circling back, I guess, to the fees discussion and similar to what was already noted in terms of just the, the intent of this review. The recommendation before council for the building bylaw is to increase those fees that haven't been raised since two thousand and five. So we did have to blow some dust off the, the bylaw looking at it. There's also, we, we did take a deep dive in terms of some of the, the language that needed to be changed as part of the bylaw as well. Just recognizing the, the building code has been updated since two thousand and five as well as being some of those forms. You, you saw some of the old Canora logos that were kind of track changes taken out. So definitely give it a bit of an update. And, and really this was born out of the, the service delivery review that was completed in two thousand twenty. So as part of that review, there was note, it was noted that building fees are heavily subsidized or the whole division by the general tax levy. If you look at the baseline years in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the amount is almost two hundred thousand. So we really do want to kind of reduce that gap. It also allows opportunities to, to look at service improvements. So for example, a new e-permitting platform, well, we'd like that to be fed from the, the new permit fees that we, we do have in place. So that's the, the, the report.
Questions or comments, counsel? All right, Adam? Tariff of fees, replanning apps?
Yeah, so similar to the previous report, the intent really is to increase fees for bylaw. This one's a little bit more current. I think the last update occurred back in two thousand fifteen. However, you also note that there's in some creation of new fee classes, I think reflective of a lot of the administration that goes into various planning files and a lot of items that we eat the cost for that should really be borne by the applicant. So if I could use one example, it'd be the, the public notices. So anything going into the paper, the city right now pays for that advertising cost. So we'd like that to be, that, that fleshed out from the actual application fee. Because that application fee should really be focused more so around, you know, the, that goes into pre-consultation, circulation, a lot of the review of different, from different departments on, on these files. So that's where you'll see or you'll notice some further, I guess, fee classes noted. Also, just in terms of if there's any major revisions to, to files as well, that's, often there may be a, a new notice required or that, you know, once again, you have to do a recirculation, re, you know, re-engaging engineering on a, on more of a full sum review of that, that update to the, to the planning file. You see things such as for, for planned subdivision to which we don't get a whole lot of them, but when we do, it's quite onerous from a legal perspective, just to get a, a full sum review. And that, once again, is incurred by the municipality when we, when we, and not covered by the, the, the fees for a planned subdivision application. So that kind of just summarizes some of the, some of the changes there as well as a lot of the basis and the evidence for, for the fees or the catalyst being comparative municipalities that demonstrate how, how low they are relative to the others.
Questions, counsel? Counselor Smith? Counselor Smith and Counselor Van Wellingham?
I think it's really good that we're, it's it's cost recovery now because taxpayers should not be paying the fees for individuals coming in and looking to get work done or permits code. So, yeah, it's a good concept and time to be up, maybe, thank the.
We are getting closer to cost recovery, but it still is a moving target for sure.
Thanks, Cal.
So we shouldn't be using that term when we talk about this? Because it's not fully.
No.
Should we say sort of cost recovery?
Well, when we talk about cost recovery, right, we're including materials and supplies, staffing, things like that, right? Like really, right now, we're just trying to cover what legwork, right, that goes into these things.
I think there'll always be a gap. I think we still want to make it conducive for development, right, not make it so, especially when you're on the planning stage, right, there is risk involved, and people are wary of paying too much just for something that may never lead to a permit being issued, right? Especially if you go through a public process and, you know, recognizing some of the more contentious processes we've undertaken, right? So, but definitely reducing the gap supports, and like I said, service enhancements, different things we can do, and then obviously reducing the the tax levy subsidy that currently occurs.
Thanks, Adam, I understand.
Counselor Van Wellingham?
Yeah, just so we don't fall behind, couldn't we just build in a 2% increase every year? Rather than like, is a week for 2015 to amount? Catch up?
Yeah, so one of the reasons why we separated the fees out for Felice Meyer is because there's different legislations. So I do know, for example, under the Building Code Act, that you have to have a public meeting every time you're raising the fees. So might be worth just vetting by legal about the validity of doing it, but just reading the language as it stands, it was my understanding that we'd have to do, every time we're raising it, we'd have to do a public meeting and go from there.
I take your point, counselor. We'll, we'll take that away, and we'll have that conversation at senior leadership about how we can handle things in the future.
Thanks. All right, Adam, application to NOHFC?
Okay, so the recommendation before council is to proceed with an application to NHFC to support redevelopment of MacLeod Park and Husky the Muskie. So this is really, the catalyst is capitalizing on this opportunity that has been presented itself with NOHFC as well as the, what staff and our consultant team have realized with MacLeod Park. There is a, I think, an opportunity here to do a much broader scope of work. When we, as an implementation team, actually took a site visit of the area, we reflected on, I think, how, how much potential the area does have. Under the current scope of work, it's very much more confined to, I'd say, a facelift opposed to a full-on redevelopment. So we're hoping that through NHFC, we'd be able to acquire funding to actually do, do something more like a redevelopment type of project, create some new amenity spaces, and, and as well as, once again, not have to worry about the tax levy being eaten the cost here. This would be something to which if, when there is, if we were successful, the municipal share would be covered or is is being planned on being recovered through the municipal accommodation tax.
Counsel? So is there changes to our capital budget that we approved?
So we just, we made those changes at the the last meeting, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Bel Canada lease?
All right, so the the recommendation here is to extend the lease with Bel Canada on Town Island. This negotiation on the extension has been done in conjunction with the NCC or Nature Conservancy of of Canada. Really, the the major intent is to ensure that, and when and if the the transfer occurs, that there's no loss of service for for area residents. That is definitely something that NCC has indicated they don't want to have occur, as well as in the event that, say, the the conditions aren't met tied to the to the agreement of sale, that we at least have that lease and still some revenue coming back to the municipality as part of this. And it is, will be, there's language in there about transferability to NCC upon those conditions being cleared.
All right, Adam, and site plan agreement to Bears Marina?
Okay, so the recommendation here is to approve a site plan agreement between the City of Canora as well and CP. The intent is to legally establish the docks. There were about seven boating slips that are primarily used by DTL Construction. In terms of some background, I know it's been a bit of a tricky file to navigate, and is really, is has been driven by the PAC meeting that would have occurred in July, to which there were two applications, one being a variance around the parking, and then the other being the expansion of a non-conforming use. So the expansion was approved by the Planning Advisory Committee, however, the variance to the parking was not. So the proponent was basically confined to utilizing the space that is on-site to accommodate any additional slips. So as a result, you saw those 72 slips being removed and then being confined to the number that's in the report currently.
The the docks that were constructed, were they done through a building permit through the city?
So once the site plan is finalized here, they'll be able to get the permits and those seven slips, yes.
But didn't they already build docks there?
The, oh, so there is the the non-conform, the, the slips are already there, fine, but there's just the the additional kind of small number that still need to be permitted, yes.
So they did get building permits for all that?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, Heather, we, well, adjourn after the public meeting?
Yeah, well, we're adjourned, adjourned this meeting now.
Okay. So before we do, we'll go around, so we'll start with Counselor Van Wellingham?
I have nothing today, thanks.
Counselor Goss?
Nothing today, thank you, Your Worship.
Counselor Smith?
Nothing today, ma'am.
Better check your phone, make sure nobody sent you.
Getting hate mail.
Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, just one item, Your Worship. I think one of our great community volunteers that's quite active in concerts and promoter since he arrived in Canora, Mr. Len Mark, celebrates a great milestone on December 16th, so just want to extend a very happy birthday to him.
Thank you. Counselor Chase?
Nothing at this time, Your Worship, thank you.
Counselor Porey?
Nothing, Your Worship, thank you.
All right, do we have, somebody has a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Your Worship, I've got the resolution that council now adjourn to a closed session at 11:36 a.m. And further, that pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 is amended, the closed session will discuss items pertaining to the following: education and training members of council, two matters, the Northwest Health Unit programs and hospital progress. And the second item is disposition of land, two matters, Central Park Community Club development and the ballpark improvements.
All in favor? Carried. So this way of meeting.